A motion to approve them.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
That's five twenty-two, five twenty-eight. Both open and executive. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have an amendment to the regulatory.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have appointments or reappointments. Shannon Clancy to the Economic Development Committee.
Hello, there, Rob.
Did you want to speak to it in a second or?
There's not much to say. Shannon is the manager of Balance of Ventures. She's a member of the community, business member of the community. And I think she'll be a good addition to the group. And she's willing and able.
Okay.
So I'd be grateful if the board approves it.
And then, and Planning Board's going to approve?
Yeah. If they do.
At their next meeting?
Exactly.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
That was Peter Hoffman from EDC. No, well, no, we got an email, I got an email that said when people speak in the audience, the camera doesn't swing, so they don't.
He swung.
Well, a little bit, but to introduce whoever was speaking. So you're all set.
Makes sense.
Okay. We have an application from Eloise Salz to Capitol Planning. Term to expire June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'm second.
Sorry.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This one's for you. And we, do we know if, is it Richard Smith?
He's on the plan, he's the planning.
I know, we don't know.
No, I've not heard back.
Okay.
They're not answering.
As to whether there's another?
Oh, wait, they have Anna Crane and Richard Smith is Barry's. Richard's not staying on, I think.
That's right.
So it's Anna, and I think Anna is going back on to the planning board.
Yeah, I think she is.
Yep.
But you don't know about Richard Smith?
I think he was, I thought he was getting off, but.
Yeah, I thought he was stepping away from things, but.
Yeah, he's finishing out this term, which is the end of this month. And then there are no meetings, so he's effectively done. So he's not, he resigned effective immediately. He's letting this term run out, which is the end of this month.
Okay.
So maybe if there is another applicant, we can.
Right.
It's Barry's.
Why don't you let, or can we, yeah, can we let Barry know that?
Eloise told Barry, because he's the appointing authority.
About Heidi?
Yeah.
No.
Oh, about Heidi?
Yeah.
I can, I can let them both know. We don't have an application for her nonetheless.
No, just I got a text from Dave a little while ago, and I think he talked to you.
Yeah.
If there's a volunteer, I just don't want them to get away if they're.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. We've got, and what is this? Oh, we don't have anything for this next thing, Richard Hanks.
There is, there's a letter in there.
Yes, well, it must be mixed up.
I'm not sure how that got mixed up, but.
Okay. So yes, we have a letter to continue. I know we appointed him last week as the first alternate building inspector.
This is clarifying up the terms.
So this is just, yeah, just saying that things are the same. Just another offer letter, because the other one, I think, had a date, ending date, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And while we're on the subject, I was just wondering when you both would like to post for the building inspector? Or maybe we should ask Margaret if she has any input.
I would like Margaret to be involved in that hire, so that, like I said, she can start building a team that she wants to work with.
So whenever, after Ju, I mean, we could post ahead of time if you'd like. Or we could wait until you come on July fifteenth.
Yeah, that's something that I'd like talking to the board about.
Okay.
About the duties, the hours, if there's going to be any change in responsibility during this transition, now is the time to be addressing that. So, yeah, I think that's something that we should, we should talk about. And I'd like, I'd appreciate being part of it.
Okay. So we'll just wait then? Okay. Sounds good. We have an appointment, yeah. Appointment for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty for Central Mass EMS Core. Oh, here it is. This is sort of a formality?
Well, it's routine. The names have changed since last year, but the fire department, fire and EMS put forward names to serve.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All righty. And we need to talk about the, to extending the expiration dates for our interim fire chief. Just in case we aren't going to be able to pick a candidate to fill his position before July one. So we're, it would be best, when I talked to Jim, he said it would be best if we just put it through July thirty-first.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Is there something to sign here, Mary? Oh, there it is.
Okay, just looking to see. All right, and the next one's Dennis.
Okay. And I said all in favor, right?
Yes. So what happens in the event we pick a person and they need to give bigger lead time, and it's past July, do we, well, extend them a week, a two?
I told him that we could stay in touch. He just has a lot of commitments in August, but he might be able to be here.
Here and there.
Yes. Or talk about someone who could fill in for him when he's not there.
Okay.
Based on how that's going, I would think that we should be okay, or really close to okay.
Yeah.
As long as the candidate's.
It was just too close to say July one.
Yeah, you couldn't have.
Okay, and.
We'll do the appointments.
Yeah, why don't we do? Why don't we do Mr. Smith?
Come on, Jim. Good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Don't worry, it's not a residential letter.
That's good.
So we're here this evening to present Jimmy Spiny with a certificate of achievement from Bay State Roads. Bay State Roads is a training organization, and we're heavily and actively involved in. Jimmy's first class with Bay State Roads was in March of two thousand and twelve, so it took him seven years to attain this, which is pretty good. It's, you know, he was very diligent in getting this done. He now joins a class of roughly seven hundred people statewide that have achieved this status. The next step, in order to get to here, he had to take seven classes. The next step from here is a master roads scholar, which requires about twenty-one classes, which I'm sure that with his dedication and perseverance, he's going to be doing. So, thank you, Jimmy. We appreciate your service. You're a tremendous asset to the town. And just another side note, all the guys are involved, and I would anticipate by the end of this calendar year that the rest of them will have that certificate.
Cool, very good.
We're very big into training and education. I think it's important.
Congratulations, Jim.
Good job, Mr. Spiny.
Thank you.
Well done.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, for the encouragement of your people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
That was awesome.
That was very nice. All right. We also need to appoint our interim treasure collector to extend.
Thank you.
Him in the position until August thirty-first, so that Margaret has a chance to do that search, too. So sorry, Margaret.
That's okay.
Do we need to get you a bigger pad of paper already?
And I did talk to Dennis, and he said that was fine, so.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have FY twenty renewal for Maya. The police fire insurance coverage. And this is all set, right, Mary?
Yep, within budget.
Within budget, great. Even better. So do, do you either want to look at it, or do you want to?
It's what it is.
Okay. Yep, do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we're planning on a coffee talk for June nineteenth at seven PM at Nineteen Carter this time.
Thank you, Evy.
Thank you, Evy. Do we want to discuss what we're going to discuss?
Well, I thought we could split it three ways. One, I had sent you both a list of what we've done with our other two, our accomplishments. Figured that that needs to be talked about, all the input that we've had from the town, just to say, we've heard you, we've done, it's in process, you know, we can't do, you know, like the CSX, and we're just not getting anywhere with the railroad ties, but, you know, we'll stay on it. And then devote a little time to new topics, but then devote most of the time to, da-da-da, meet the new TA. Well, it'll give folks of the town an opportunity to come and just chit chat again. The format that we have, it's open, it's free flowing, we don't vote, we don't deliberate, we just take notes, and then we divide, and we figure out how to take care of what the town has brought up for concerns, whether it's traffic, whether it's beautification.
Yes, ma'am.
Beautification.
Do I need a haircut?
No, you don't need a haircut. But no, just to go through the topics, so that the town knows that we hear that, we're listening to them, we're taking care of the things that they feel are important to them. So they always come back with new topics. The first one that we had was a few people, the second one we had was a few more people. We really couldn't fit in the room. So the third one, that's why we're coming to Nineteen Carter, because it's got wicked comfy chairs. So, but that'll be the, the format. So if you guys agree on the sheet that I put together, I figured we could copy them off and pass them out around the room.
Okay. Do you have anything you want to, anything else you want to add or discussion? Sounds like quite an agenda.
It'll be, yeah, it'll be, it'll be full, but we'll make sure to give Margaret most of the, most of the time.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Oh, you're very welcome. Looking forward to it.
Okay. We have a senior workoff applicant for right-of-way sign removal. And we did get approval from National Grid and Verizon for this.
Since this normally would come from the department head, Dave, is this something that you feel that your department needs?
I can find a lot better use of someone's time for senior workoff.
Would you like another one?
So, so this is something that your guys with the, the input of the building inspector could probably take care of without a workoff.
Generally, I haven't had a complaint since I've been here.
Okay, so basically, we have paid staff that can take care of this if it's an issue. We don't really need a workoff position for this. And we didn't get a request from the department, which is how that's supposed to run.
Okay. We, we just had an offer from a resident.
Yeah, but really, the workoff program is supposed to be, our departments look at what they need, and then they make a request, and then they're matched. I can show you the, the description of the program if you need to see it. That's really how it's supposed to go.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
All right. I mean, should we send Denny your way at all? See if he can help in other things?
I'm not sure we could line up from the new, but I'm not so sure that sign removal is a priority, to be honest with you.
I think it was just one of his pet peeves from his old days that he saw and wanted to do, wanted to offer his time to, to help.
Well, maybe that in conjunction with cleaning up some roadside debris would work.
Well, we're going to get help with that, too. All right.
Isn't he supposed to send his request to the Council on Aging first and go that room? I believe that's how the requirements are.
Yeah, it is. Dave would send a request to Council on Aging, who would then match him with.
And then it doesn't start until July. There's none that start now.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Do you want to send Denny an email to this effect, or connect him with Dave, or?
We have married people with positions outside of going through the Council on Aging. The Council on Aging just does what the department asks after the fact, so. But yeah, if you want me to send him an email to connect with Dave to talk about opportunities that may exist in highway, is that what people like?
Does that sound good?
Yeah.
Okay. Or I can always swing by his house.
For Dave's department, it's up to Dave what he needs, it's not.
Okay. All right. It's seven twenty. We need to get a report from the eighteen seventy Town Hall. Come on up, Evy.
That's you?
Right. Can I sit up here?
Sure.
I'm just going to let you know that the Town Hall Advisory Committee met and interviewed two candidates. We received four resumes. The four, one of the four was not.
Qualified.
Qualified. Didn't have, didn't match. We asked three to come in. One didn't come in. They didn't respond, so maybe they found another job. And two we interviewed. So we would like to wholeheartedly recommend Holly Lupt for the position.
Okay. After interviewing and?
After interviewing, much deliberation. But she was the clear favorite of the two.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Yay.
Do we need to appoint, I would assume? All right. So do you have, and what was the start date again?
So the start date is June seventeenth, it's the Monday.
Okay.
Let me just make sure that's right.
Yeah, it's two Mondays.
Yeah, seventeenth. And the reason that we set that up was because LeAnn is leaving on July first. And so that gives her two weeks to train.
Yeah.
And she's actually leaving the country for two weeks, so we felt it would be very imperative that they have that overlap time.
Yeah.
Before putting her out. So hopefully, so I'd like to know what you'd like me to do, or are you guys going to take it from here? Do you contact the, her to negotiate, or do, I don't know how that works, so.
Okay, yeah.
Draft an offer letter and?
Draft an offer letter, because there was a range. I, we didn't talk any money or anything, we talked start date.
Okay.
But obviously, she's very interested in knowing right of way, because she would need to make arrangements to start on the seventeenth, because that's coming right up.
She knows.
Yeah.
So do we need to loop in you?
She's an awesome choice, you're saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So we'll leave it up to you then? Okay.
Yeah.
We'll leave it up to you to take care.
Yes.
Okay. All right. The other thing, I just wanted to make sure that somebody did was send thank you letters to the three that applied.
We don't typically do that, but I can. I can also send out an email to all three of them, apply and CC them also, and see one another, and just say, thank you for applying.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that the position's been filled.
Yep.
Because especially the one that came in, I feel like we over the response. Thank you for coming.
Okay.
Good luck.
And you can give Mary the contact information.
Well, she has it all, because she gave it all to us.
Oh, that's right.
We didn't, we were just the interviewing team.
Yeah.
But.
All right.
All right, so just one tiny thing. The job description that was given to the candidates has just a couple of errors. It says create monthly reports for the Town Hall Advisory Committee, which of course is no longer in existence. So it needs to say, I can give this to Mary or?
Sure.
I think it was the personal committee.
It would go to the personal committee.
I know we switched all of that.
Okay, well, the copy that went to them was not switched, so should I give it to you, or?
No, yeah, no.
Talk to you? So there's just two?
Holly needs to know that the reporting, who she's reporting to. I think she's aware of that.
We told her that, but there's one sentence, I just wanted to ask you all for your opinion that we added, to recommend that we added, and Dave's here, so that's good. Because the Town Hall Advisory Committee was always responsible for the building, and we, we told LeAnn to do what she needed to do. But we would, since we're not going to be there, we would like to add the following. Create annual building maintenance plan, such as repairs, painting, et cetera, with facilities manager and historical commission. So we feel as an outgoing committee, that's important, that somebody take charge of that. And we feel like that person's on site. When something happens, we feel like they should be responsible to contact the facilities manager. And make sure that the historical commission's involved, because it's on the National Historic Register.
Okay.
So that's, is our recommendation we give to you to think about.
You got all that, Mary?
I can give this to you.
All right.
So, thank you very much. Am I?
Thank you.
Done? Is that official now? Can we tell Holly?
Yeah, it's official.
Okay, because I'm going to go see her right now. She's running.
Did you get my email about the stuff I left on your desk?
Yes, thank you for that. And thank you for leaving it.
Our pleasure.
All right. Thank you for all your hard work. Please thank the others.
Yes, okay.
Awesome.
Over and out.
Thank you. See you in a couple of weeks. Oh, we got to vote on it. We have, we have motions from the crowd.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor? Aye.
So appointed subject to determination of pay rate.
Yes.
By personnel.
Okay. We should have done that.
Well, it's all good. We caught it.
All right.
The audience caught it for us. Thank you. Thank you.
See, where did we leave off? Town administrator update, correct?
Oh, seven thirty, yeah.
And all I can say is we're working on a contract, and the background check is pending.
I think you skipped fire.
Oh, I did. I think I sent the update to both you two. But just for the public, MRIs conducted the telephone interviews and selected five candidates to participate in the assessment process. One candidate dropped out at the conclusion of the television, telephone interviews based on an unwillingness to move to within a reasonable radius of Berlin. Invitations will be sent to the five candidates and selected on Monday, and once we have confirmation, we'll upload the resumes to the committee. The interviews will be Thursday, June thirteenth. Bob Craig will meet the committee on Wednesday, June twelfth, at seven PM, to review the candidate resumes, provide an overview of the process, and provide instruction for observation and participation in the, in the assessment center.
And that came from, and that came from MRI?
Brian dug in at MRI.
Awesome.
Okay. The treasure collector, the search will begin after the TEA is on board. And I think we're still waiting on our police chief to arrive. I think he is planning, still planning to come.
We can do the seven thirty appointment.
Yeah, why don't we do that? We'll do the seven thirty appointment with Chris Slade.
Now, to set the record straight, this is completely informal.
Yeah.
Because I cannot ask for release from chapter sixty-one on the property on Highland Street that I'm working on, without going through a number of steps provided by state law. And if we tried to, it would only blow up later anyway, both for you and for me. But I just wanted to come over. We'll be going forward, but you start thinking about this, chewing on it. I'm going to leave this with you, you can post it for the public to look. Here's our area we're going to develop right here. And everything else is open space. This really hasn't changed since we started the plan. It's the same thing. And your senior housing does allow us to have the wells in the open space. And we have one little piece right here, it's two tenths of an acre or something, I'd like to convey, to the abbot, who's a very nice guy, and we'll give him a little breathing room on a crowded house lot, at my expense, I'm not asking anything for it. So anyway, we will be going forward. Now, one of the decisions we have to reach between us is how this land will be maintained in the future and owned and the rest. Our proposal would be, there'll be a homeowners association, obviously, this is a condo project. Let the homeowners association own it, but transfer the development rights to the town of Berlin, or your designee, whoever you'd want to have hold it. Has a few advantages. One, the taxes aren't much, but you do pick up a little bit of tax money on it. Two, when somebody dumps a bag of trash on it, it's their responsibility to maintain it and pick it up. You don't have to call your highway department, pick it up off town-owned land. But this is only a suggestion as to how to do it, and there's a dozen different ways, you know, that we can do this. So if you want to talk to your conservation people, and land preservation, whatever, please do. Basically, we'll hopefully be in two weeks from tonight with the formal application. And then you have a hundred and twenty days to ponder it. We're hoping you don't take that long. And we'll do everything we can to be cooperative, as we'd like to get this off the ground this year before winter sets in. But that's up to you. You, you have every right to take a hundred and nineteen days if you want, and then tell us no. Start over. So that's, that's about it. As I say, I just wanted to bring up those ideas, and by all means, work on them. I know you're going to want some time to think about it and consult with your other people.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's pretty typical for conservation to do it that way.
Yeah. I think it's the best way to do it, but it's, whatever, and it's going to be a lot of fine print in the agreement, is to watch what. We're certainly expecting them to ask for public access, particularly on the lower trail that comes up here underneath those ledges, and comes up right here, and then We're certainly expecting them to ask for public access, particularly on the lower trail, that comes up here underneath those ledges, and it comes up right here, and then over onto, well, both, it wises off to both of these abutters, who have allowed the trail to be used, I guess.
Okay.
But, uh, as it, as I said, we can work that out, as how much public access and under what terms and the rest. Our people don't have everybody traipsing through their backyards, but at the same time, Berlin can enjoy the open space.
Okay, is there any questions?
Now, you're stopping in at Conservation Turinite too, or?
If they would like me to, I'd be very happy to, I haven't con, they haven't contacted me and I haven't contacted them, to be honest with you, this is happening sort of fast. But if you think they would like to talk with me, I'd be very happy to swing over.
My, my guess is yes, I can.
The next meeting is?
Is it tomorrow night?
Yes, I believe it's tomorrow. Isn't that right, Mary?
I thought I saw an email about, from Carolyn, saying something about nineteenth or something? Do they have another meeting after tomorrow night?
Who was coming in at eight thirty?
Conservation is tomorrow at seven.
There was, they requested, was it something other than this at eight thirty, that there was some meeting that was set up?
I can't remember.
I don't see this on their agenda, but then this only really just popped up.
Yeah, it has.
They can informally talk about it.
Yeah.
Do you need your plan there for now?
No, I was gonna leave that with you.
Highland Street Senior Housing, I put him on the CC agenda for eight thirty, Wednesday, June nineteenth.
Eight thirty tomorrow night?
No, the nineteenth is two weeks.
Oh, nineteen?
Yeah, is what I have here.
Right.
Okay.
That's about the, around the time you were thinking you'd have the agreement, right?
Yes, hopefully then, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, very good. And no other questions, I'll head back to Bolton and get out of your hair.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate your cooperation and help.
You bet.
Don't you plan, Chris?
No, he said we could, he's gonna leave it for us to ponder and for town folk to ponder on.
You throw a, you know, absorbent board, it's good for darts.
Tell me that right on time, Mr. Galvin.
Perfect. Did I make it in time?
You did.
Well. The last inning's going on, so.
Oh, you left during the game?
I left early. So, we'll see.
Were you winning?
Uh, we were down one run, so we were at bat, so we'll see.
Okay.
Playoffs, so.
Well, I hope you did better than the brooms last night.
That's all right. Nothing going on, babe.
Okay.
So, um.
We did get a copy of your report?
Yeah.
Yes, it came in the email.
Yeah, um, kinda old business, what things have been going on, we're still working and waiting for reimbursement on that twenty thousand dollar grant on the, uh, the electronic fingerprinting system. Card three back in service and has stayed in service thus far, since the last repair.
Very good.
I guess that the good news on that is that I actually did order the replacement vehicle for that, so I ordered a twenty twenty hybrid SUV for the, the replacement for that.
And where does this one go and? Away?
Away.
Away?
We'll see, yeah, but it's, it's going away. I don't wanna see it again.
Yeah.
It's just been, it's been a disaster blade, so.
While it's running.
Yeah. So, yeah, and like I said, the only issue with the old business is just waiting for that, that money from the feds. So, we submitted some paperwork this past week, and hopefully, uh, we'll see what happens. But this last month, um, not, not too busy, um, you know, just over seven hundred calls, one arrest, eleven cases of criminal charges. Motor vehicle stops just under a hundred with, you know, eighty citations. We did have nineteen crashes this month, the numbers were up a little bit on motor vehicle crashes. And seven of them were on Central Street, granted, it was spread out over a large area, but they were all, you know, all on Central. So, um, you know, and that's one of the areas that most of our motor vehicle stops are on, but it is an area where speed is definitely a concern.
Central Street?
Central Street.
Yeah.
So, um, we had a little issue with the hotel, um, since they opened up, um, from, uh, the twenty-seventh of last month to the fourteenth of, uh, I'm sorry, the twenty-seventh of, uh, April to, to May, uh, May fourteenth. We responded to twenty-one nine-one-one hang up calls at the hotel. They all came from the elevators. What happened is, is they were required, when they wired the emergency buttons in the elevators, to wire them direct to nine-one-one. Most of our elevators in town, that's what they do, because they're in the school, they're here, they're at the eighteen seventy. We don't, you know, they're town elevators, but they're not, we don't have a service that we pay to monitor them, so we go to the dispatch center direct. Obviously, that didn't work so well for the hotel. Fortunately, we were able to work with the hotel, work with the fire marshal, um, and change it, so that it now brings down to their front desk. I think the first day that it actually changed, it happened seven times. So it saved us quite a few responses, and, and in general, um, the hotel's been great to work with. So, and other than that, although the one arrest was in their parking lot, um, it, uh, we really haven't seen a lot of problems as a result. So we just, I filed for, um, the federal bulletproof vest grant, we filed for in the past year. And what the federal government does is they basically pay for half of the cost of our, our replacement bulletproof vests. And our replacement cycle's basically every five years, there's some staggered, because officers have come in, in between on that, but we're looking at doing quite a few replacements, uh, this year on that program, so. It's not even a competitive grant, it's generally, this is kinda what you're allotted, you fill out the paperwork properly, and you get the funding. So, we're just waiting for confirmation on that. Another thing that I didn't put in here is that we did have an incident, um, on Old Central Street, where we had a fatality. Kind of, a little bit high profile, but one thing that happened, I don't know if you recall, a couple of months ago, I sent out an email that had some videos from a, uh, kind of a First Amendment group that's been going around in municipalities, making public records requests, doing other things and filming them. Well, they happened to show up there. And it just happened to be that they were driving by at the time. So there actually is a video posted of, um, one of our officers. Nothing bad there, unfortunately, there was an altercation between the person filming and one of the family members of the victim. Obviously, emotions are high, and they, you know, don't like a camera stuck in their face, and, um, didn't amount to anything, but, um, yeah, so we made the internet on that.
Oh, boy.
Other than that, things are going pretty smooth, we've been working to fill the vacancy, um, created by Officer Rogers going to West Boylston, um, hoping to have somebody soon to plug that, because that has created, obviously, some staffing issues for us.
Cool. That is it? Do you have anything, you don't have any more information on the charging station yet, do you?
Um, I will have more tomorrow.
Okay.
There's somebody from ChargePoint coming out. Doesn't look promising, looks like there may be some more expense to the town.
That we were unaware of?
That we were unaware of.
Yeah.
So, um, we'll see, it sounds like, and from, it sounds like that ChargePoint was the company we had decided to go with. They had a lot more knowledge of working with this National Great Grant, um, so they've thrown some numbers out my way, they're gonna come out here, we're gonna look at everything tomorrow, and, uh, we'll have a firm grasp tomorrow, whether it's something that we'll proceed with or we won't.
What time are they coming out?
Uh, they will be here at one o'clock.
Okay.
So I emailed Tim, I don't know if he.
Okay, I don't know if he may not have seen it yet, I'll, I'll let him know.
We'll, uh, we'll see what they say. All right.
And are you available to do this Berlin Auto Parts walk in July at some point?
When is it, yeah?
Well.
Been there before, so, yeah, whenever.
It was up to Vaughn, whether the ninth or the twenty-third?
Well, he hasn't even been asked yet.
Oh, he hasn't been asked yet?
Just do a doodle poll of everybody involved, and see what's the best even for the Thompsons.
Can I just give this to him?
July, yeah, it's fine, yeah, I mean, it's, it's something done in the past, so.
I was asking the board's wishes, for which July meeting we work for.
Whenever, July twenty-third, he might not be around, but the ninth, definitely do, so.
And nothing ever came from the neighbor concerned? Mr. Shoot? With that?
No, I mean, the last thing was that, I looked into that last call that he had made, and he didn't even provide any information that it was him calling, I just went on the timeframe to find out. So we haven't, it, it generally kinda circles back around every year around this, you know, time when it's re-permitting and everything. So we generally don't get a lot of calls from them.
All right. Excellent.
All right, excellent.
Did you get a chance to meet?
Margaret?
I met Margaret, I, I got, I got the pleasure of talking to her a few times, yes.
That's right, I forgot. Cause she may be looking for a computer, Mr. Data Systems?
It's all, all in the works.
Oh, good, good, good.
So, not a problem.
Good. All right.
And thanks for sitting in my driveway.
Hey, I'll take care of it.
One of your officers begged, somebody whizzing down a line, and they weren't too happy when I pulled out of the driveway, but I'm like.
Gotta get out, right?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
All right.
Well, have a good night.
Thanks, Tom. Thank you, and good luck, I do hope you win, and future wins.
Were you really?
Now, Richard was on the list to at least go to Berlin Auto Parts, even if he doesn't go with us, trying to make sure that he stops in there too.
Yeah, I think we could do that.
So, July ninth, subject to their availability?
Either one was good with me.
Yeah, that's.
You're good too, the ninth?
Sure.
Okay, and, um, if you could just ask him?
Have virgin, yeah.
Yeah, ask, yeah, ask him if he can stop by sometime, whether it's.
Yeah, just to get his recommendation, make sure everything looks good for him.
In the past, fire went.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And fire, or fire inspector, or the other?
Right.
Or whoever they want to send.
Right.
What, what are you walking the property for? What are you walking for?
There, it's, uh, annually, we permit the junkyard.
Yeah, I'm not sure why we walk the property.
Because there's a border health history with this property, and there's also.
I know, but us particularly, because we have no expertise in this whatsoever.
That's why I wanted to make sure others were going with us.
You don't have to go, you can just say you don't wanna go this year.
Well.
I see no need to go, we have no expertise in this whatsoever, I wanna hear from the fire department, I wanna hear from the building inspector.
Would you rather ask them to do a daytime inspection, which, you know what I mean, versus a nighttime board inspection and report back?
Yes, please.
Yeah, they're available.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
All right.
Could I just turn it on that for a second, please?
Yep.
So we have a drain line that runs through the junkyard, that collapsed last year, there's no easement, there's no paperwork, there's no nothing, it's one of those things they put in years ago in color over. It's gonna be a problem, and it's gonna be very expensive to correct.
For?
It's.
For the town, because that's where the, it picks up the catch basin, it's coming down Coburn, and goes right through the junkyard.
This is different, but you could, I could ask by invitation if Dave can go too, I'll ask the Thompsons if they can go.
They're very good people to work with, but it's gonna be a problem when it finally lets go again.
Or, or separate.
You, you, you wanna be involved?
Or separately, I can hook you up with them.
You wanna be involved in the trip then? Okay, good.
Same trip?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sure it's not a problem. All right. I think we're down to other new business. Correct?
Mm-huh.
I had gotten an email through the town website from Judy Kerr, who is a granddaughter of Mabel Felton Marble, that we just gave the scholarship out for. She would like to, um, donate to the scholarship fund, and, um, I think in her email, she did say she had already spoken to Sylvia. Okay.
We don't know that.
All right, so, I was going to ask the board whether Mary could connect people and contact Sylvia, make sure it's a go. And, um, then Dennis, I think, is the one who would.
Or I could just give her wire instructions, and it can get into the town account, or she could mail a check in, which is what Sylvia does.
All right, if that's okay with the board?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you pondering? Okay.
All right. And there was some discussion about need for procurement for the pumper tanker. I didn't know whether the board wanted Mary to help the fire department with that process, or if we could wait until Margaret comes on. Um, it didn't sound like it was an emergency, but I don't know.
Yeah, I guess that would be up to Jim, how he wants to proceed.
Okay, I didn't hear from Jim about it, but, um, we could check with him, see if it's something that he wants to get started on, or can wait. Is that okay?
Yeah, find out the criticalness of it.
Okay.
We approved a pumper tanker at town meeting that now needs to be purchased, so Mary normally does procurement.
I'm happy to work with Mary and, and get her in chief on this.
That would be helpful.
Okay.
It's on straight purchase, part trade and part cutting stuff.
Okay. I think that was all my new business. Anybody else?
I should've brought this up when we were doing the, um, Dennis and, uh, Jim re-ups, but are we going to give them a COLA increase? Or June needs to know whether we're giving them a, a COLA.
For the month?
Well, like Dennis would've been going into another fiscal year, and.
Or is he, they're just gonna continue at the same rate that they're getting right now?
Is, uh, what was, what was budgeted?
The letters say the same rate.
Yeah, the letters say the same rate, I believe.
The nineteen rate, unless the, unless the board wants to change that, I can change the letter.
For a month?
Okay, I'm just asking.
Right.
Two months.
Two months?
Yeah. Then he normally, if he was full time, he would've gotten a raise, so if, if he was to be hired, he'd probably retroactively have to do that, just so you know.
Okay, that's fine. We'll leave him as is, and then if something comes up, we'll discuss.
Fine, cool. Okay. Any other new business?
Uh, I just wanna do a shout out to Emily and Roberta from the Darnell School in Hudson. Just happened, Chance, that they were here, it was, uh, as I've been posting the letters from Representatives Naughton and Trahan and Senator Tran. Uh, actually Louise Janda had reached out and said, hey, what about the people who don't have access to Facebook or don't have email? Can you make hard copies? And I went, sure. Uh, happened to be here, Emily happened to be here, so I let her do the copy-in and let her do the state plan, and I dropped them off at Nineteen Carter, and that's what I had asked, uh, Evy, if she had gotten them. And so they distributed down there, and Louise will give them to folks at Northbrook Village and Brook Lane, so, community can be totally in the know as to what's going on from there, state senators and rep.
They also have senior luncheon this, um, Thursday, it's the first, so you might wanna try to get some there as well.
There are, I left copies there this, um, this afternoon, so, um, they're there in the back, and I let Evy know.
But, see, I think they're at First Parish, or they are.
Yeah, they're at First Parish Church for the luncheon.
Okay, so then I can ask Evy if she can just pull, uh, cause I made like twenty-five copies of each, so she can just pull a handful out and we can get them around.
Seniors group.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, uh, old business. I went to the Tolman Property Meeting, which is two pieces of land on Walnut Street, there's a little piece on one side and a little larger piece on the other side, that Dennis is, uh, talking about ta, tax taking. There was Dennis, Rob McKay, Walter Bickford, me, and Dave Smith. And, um, the only notes I really have is that the past demolition cost estimates were thirty thousand for the house, seventy thousand for cleaning up the yard. And Dennis was gonna look into the cost for Minuteman Vocational School to help with demolition, um, the students that are certified. No, well.
No, Minuteman.
Minuteman.
Yeah.
Lexington? I think, yeah. Anything on that grant, is there anything that we can get, get on that grant to help us?
Dennis didn't seem to think that it would, it would be worth it. He didn't think, I mean, and, and another thing is, he will be coming in to talk to us about this, because the board would have to make a decision on this, or whether to at least pursue it. Conservation is interested, I believe, in the small piece of land, um, that can be taken, and it could be taken separately. It's, it might be a good parking area for conservation. And that's about all I've got on that. Dennis will be, I don't think he's already made an appointment to come in, has he?
I think he wants to come in on your next meeting, later in June, twenty-fourth.
Okay. All right, and he may have some more information as far as the vocational school, and, um, he didn't go into why he didn't think the Brownfield.
Eloise.
I'll, I'll wait till she's here.
You, you know, he didn't go into why the Brownfield, um.
Grant?
Grant may not be a good idea, but, um, that's about all I got, Eloise?
I'm on the housing partnership, and the next time you're talking about tax titled land, I know the planning board in the past has talked about trying to do, uh, forty B infill, you know, nautical housing development, but just, you know, a small house.
Mm-hmm.
Or a con, you know, a two-family scattered about town.
Right.
And so we would just like to be included next time.
Okay, then you should, you wanna, if, if it is gonna be the twenty-fourth, he would be coming here to talk to. coming here to talk to us about it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I also had, right after that, I had another meeting that was on the Wheeler Dam, the Bonazzoli property, which is also, could be tax-taking. And that was Robin Bonazzoli and her friend Leslie Higley, Dave Smith, Dennis, Walter Bigford and I, and, um, they have, they have a lot of things that they need to look into, and a lot of questions that need answers.
They being?
The Bonazzolis.
Okay.
There was an area that had dynamite at one point, and we're not sure if it's still being permitted, um, so we'd probably have to check with the fire department on that. They, the Bonazzolis also have a piece of land in the center of town, um, that would be good for tax-taking, and I think that, um, that they may decide to donate it to the town, um, and then it would be, the selectmen, I guess, would have to be the ones who would be taking the land.
How much?
That one has no explosives and no.
No, no, no.
Waste.
No, it doesn't. The dynamite, the possibility is Wheeler Dam, which is down Lower Pleasant Street. Whitney?
Going into Northborough.
Right. Not sure that, even Walter said he had not walked down there to see whether there was dynamite or not.
The dynamite was in bunkers.
Yes.
They went in when I was the selectman.
Who did?
The bunkers went in.
Oh, they went in, then? Okay.
Yes, most of the bunkers were on the Northborough side.
Good.
Yeah, they were trying to figure that out, too, whether it was the Northborough or the Berlin side, they thought, really, it was the Berlin side, but.
I don't know, we don't leave down there.
Right, it's just down there.
Draw straws, who walks first?
Sounds like another not-selecting, that's no expertise, right?
Yeah. Yes.
Wouldn't the, wouldn't the town, does it have a record of this? I can't imagine.
Yes, in my office.
They're, you know, so they have a lot of work to do on whether the, um, uh, the dam would have to be remediated, or. So what do they want to do? Is there anything you wanna add, Dave, you were there?
There's, they're a few years away from any kind of resolution, in my opinion.
It sounds like it.
They've got a lot of legal issues to go through.
Yes. Yeah.
I think they'd sort of like to make it somebody else's problem.
Uh, probably.